We'll reconvene with all members present peacefully. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Before we start with the minutes for approval, I do want to take a moment to recognize a few residents that we have lost in the past few weeks. Vincent Hines, who died at the age of 95. Vincent was a resident for just a few years, but touched all of us in his short time in Madison. As he told me, he'd lived in many towns and never felt the true sense of community until he moved to Madison. Vincent was 19 years old. He was among 156,000 troops who landed on the beaches of Normandy at the height of World War II. And as a diver in the Navy, his primary job was to recover the victims in the water. He returned to Normandy last year to recognize his 75th anniversary of D-Day. He was one of five to receive a medal from the French government and membership of the French Legion of Honor from a grateful country and grateful continent for all the efforts on D-Day. And we recognized him with the Mayor's Hero Award. And then he and his brother Les were honored as our guests on Veterans Day last year at the World War One Memorial. And had there been a parade this year, Vincent would have been the grand marshal on Memorial Day. So Vincent, you were in Madison for a short time, but provided us with years of inspiration. Also, we lost Janet Iosa, died at Long Yoldis on Monday, June 29. She met her husband, Rocco, at his first restaurant, one if those remember, was on Park Avenue. The couple, they were married in June of 62, just celebrated 58 years of marriage together. She was very instrumental in Rocco's success with his restaurants and then later with her son, two sons, Restaurants, Rocco's and 54 Main. And Janet and her husband, Rocco, have been always so supportive of terrible causes in the masking community. And you have recognized her many years and keep an eye on things at Rocco. She was predeceased by her son Sal. She is survived by Rocco, her husband, her four children, Joseph, Rocco, Gino, and Angela, Angelo, Angela, sorry. And for 11 grandchildren and four great-grandchildren. We also lost Mary Salerno, Madison, one-time lifelong Madison resident. She died on July 7th at the age of 89. She was born in Morristown, raised in Madison with her two sisters and who she remained close to for her entire life. She was married to Jerry on February 1950, and they stayed in Madison, raised her family. Lifelong parishioner of St. Vincent's. And for many years, she cooked, prepared lunches for students in the cafeterias of El Barton, Lipton Park, and Haller Park High School. And when she wasn't working in that capacity, she was one of our crossing guards for many years. So many of our students and parents would know Mary. She's survived by two daughters, Mary and Madeline, and two sisters of both of Madison, Connie Perillo and Elizabeth Coleman, and one grandson. And we also lost Phil Russo, passed away on July 7th at his home near Madison. Lifelong Madison resident, self-employed, business owner of quality maintenance, husband of Rita for 66 years. He leaves behind three children, Constance, Rocco, and Rosa Linda, three grandchildren and two great-grandchildren. So let's take a moment to remember Vincent Hines, Janet Iosa, Mary Salerno, and Phil Russo. Pass our thoughts on to the families left behind. Moment. Thank you very much. We'll move on to minutes for approval. Can I have a motion for the executive minutes of June 8th, 2020?
So moved.
I have a second. I think Carmella said second. I read her lips, but she's muted. So for record, Carmella is seconding.
I'm muted now.
All right. All these have already been discussed. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. And then a motion for the regular minute of June.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections or changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Welcome all. This is always seems like a long time when we come out of a five Monday month. So it's been three weeks in between meetings. So we have a bit of catching up to do. For those that logged in earlier and got to see the video that was running, that was done by Paul Morgan. Just a great view of Madison and how we are committed to being Madison strong. And we will come back stronger through all this. Every day is a new challenge. And I hope everyone had a great, but very, I know would have been a very different Fourth of July weekend. And but over the last three weeks, we've seen some progress. We've seen the opening of personal care businesses, as noted by my haircut here. It was getting a little long. And also the opening of, you know, I wouldn't, I didn't never like the title, "Not Essential Businesses." I understand the clarification, but I think all our businesses in downtown are essential to the quality of our life. So it's great to see activity and going in and out of our retail stores. But it's been a reminder over the last couple of weeks that, and we see across the country, we're far from the end of the pandemic. And if we don't continue to manage as well, we will take major steps backwards. So implore on everyone to be vigilant in their personal distancing and wearing a mask and be mindful. The governor's latest directive of ever in public, when you cannot maintain your six feet, put the mask on. So let's do that. Let's be patient of our reopening. Hearing about our community conversations shortly. There is a very ugly fire, but it's only in grayscale, but there's a nice color version of it out there. But if you haven't already, put it on your calendar this Saturday from 10 to 12. A chance to like have conversations around diversity, inclusion, and get to know your neighbors. And Ed will touch on that a little bit more. We appreciate her leadership in that area. And I just want to update. We have a couple of ordinances that you'll be hearing about later today and introduced. And this is related to our ongoing working towards the settlement in our housing. I have not made a report in a while, but we are working very hard and getting close to a settlement, much as it was outlined in the memorandum of understanding over a year ago. It will include the 40 units of affordable housing. It includes some of the actions we are taking today, and we look forward to bringing this to a close. And we'll be, we had had a video conference today and a couple tomorrow. And we'll continue and hopefully the next council meeting, I'll be able to share more information. And shifting to the employee of the month for of July is Jenna Landrick. And she stepped up to assume additional responsibilities without compensation in the building department and tax assessors office during the retirements of the tax assessor and a longtime employee in the building department. So we thank Jenna for her work, and if you see her, please congratulate her. And another person that should be recognized, and I, we will be doing more of a recognition because this is incredible. We didn't do our shout outs tonight, but this person probably would have gotten, deserved seven shout outs each from six, from each of our council members and myself. It's a Madison ambulance volunteer, Jack Lutz. On July 15th, is celebrating his 60th year as a volunteer for the ambulance corps. Truly incredible. So just to, to save you from doing the math on the calendar. He started being a volunteer when Dwight D. Eisenhower was in the White House. Very impressive. So Jack, thank you for your 60 years of dedicated volunteers and president of Madison. And now on to reports from committees. Finance Borough Clerk, Council President, Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Tax Collector's Office. Earlier in June, the council passed an important resolution to establish a rate so we can issue estimated property tax bills for the third quarter. Those bills were mailed out on Monday, June 29. Please keep your eye open for the bill and remember that you will only be billed for the third quarter. A bill for the remaining three quarters will be mailed out later in the summer after the state and county certify the tax rate. If you have any questions, you call Chrissy or Hattie at the Tax Collector's Office, and they can help you out. From the CFO, the user-friendly budget has been completed and posted on Rosenet and sent to the Division of Local Government Services. The document is essentially a reformatting of the state budget document with some additional details on pension and payroll. The purpose of the document is to get towns to report items in a more uniform manner. Also from the CFO, a draft audit has been completed. The Audit Committee met on June 25th to discuss the document. And I'm happy to report that the borough's financial records are in good shape. I want to thank the Audit Committee members for their time and dedication as we spent close to two hours discussing the details. The audit is on for discussion this evening, and Valerie Dolan from Mississauga will be on call to answer any council questions. The audit was clean and only contained one finding, which involved segregation of duties. It's a relatively minor comment and one we have discussed for a number of years. But the auditor is required to acknowledge this finding in the audit. Many towns in New Jersey have the same comment, and it happens because the town does not have a central cashier window. Most payments that Madison receives are credit card or check. So the amount of cash involved is not significant. It would be very inconvenient if we created a central cashier window because the customer would have to go to the department, get a payment slip, go back to the cashier, which would be in another building and make payment, and then go back to the department and pick up their documents. As the corrective action states, management has determined that the increased cost and related inconvenience to the residents of the borough associated with resolving the findings are not reasonable at this time. If you have any questions, Jim Burnett will be happy to answer them. But we were very pleased with the audit. I sat on the Audit Committee. And they, these guys really asked some great questions, and Valerie was totally awesome and had all the answers. So very pleased with this audit. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Public Safety, Ms. Ellie.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Police Department. During the past month, our police department has been very busy. We've had several thefts, including one auto theft, a couple of assaults, seven frauds, 22 disorderly conduct, and 36 other offenses, and a number of noncriminal investigations. But what they do want residents to remember is to secure your vehicles due to the recent motor vehicle thefts. And remember, that means lock your car and remove any valuables. From the Fire Department, outside inspectors have made their annual inspection of our fire department equipment. And we will need to rebuild one pump and replace one ladder. And our firefighters are now resuming group training skills. From the Planning Board, the Borough of Madison is preparing a new master plan that will serve as the framework for the borough's land use policies and community vision. We are inviting all residents on July 29th at 7:00 PM and to this meeting to discuss our findings and to get feedback. You need to register on Zoom, so you need to go to rosenet.org to do that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Public Works on Engineering, Ms. Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. From Engineering, the milling and paving on Glenwild will be completed in the next couple of weeks in time for the start of school. Storm sewers on Albright and Beverly will be initiated within the next two weeks. And the Dodge Field restroom construction will start this week. So that'll be good. Get the bathrooms back online at Dodge Field. From DPW, DPW continues to do regular maintenance work on borough vehicles and recreational fields. The North Street Pump needed emergency repairs. And with all the water that we came, that came down early this week, some of the catch basins had to be repaired as well. And then Parks Advisory, going forward, they're looking to put together a master plan for all of the recreational and all of the parks and recreation here in Madison, a master plan for using and maintaining the fields. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Community Affairs, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. The seniors and other people will have a table at the farmer's market for the next few weeks to help people complete their census, census, census. Even though, even though Madison is, Morris County is one of the top five in the completion rate in the country and in the state. We need to still work on it because there's a lot of uncounted people. In accordance with the New Jersey Department of Health Guidelines and corresponding executive orders, direct programs began competitions for medium-risk sports on July 6th. As the guidelines state, coaches, spectators, and athletes should wear face coverings and adhere to social distancing requirements when not engaged in high-intensity activity. Examples of medium-risk sports include, but are not limited to, baseball, softball, soccer, basketball, lacrosse. There's currently 140 Little League practice people participating in Little League. And there's 160 softball ladies, okay, that are participating as well. So for the Downtown Development Commission, the downtown concert series will go on the summer, this summer, following social distancing and masking requirements. The first concert has been rescheduled to Friday, July 17. The concerts are held at the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts on Green Village Road. Guests will be asked to bring their own chairs. The Madison Farmer's Market is open every Thursday through November 19th. The market is located at Dodge Field, and the hours are the same, 2 to 7. And customer health and safety guidelines are posted at the entrances. Of the Madison Community Arts Center, the first drive-in concert in Madison will be held on Saturday, July 25th at 2:00 PM and 6:15 PM, Sunday, July 26th at 2:00 PM in the MRC. The concert is being presented in conjunction with the Folk Project. The performers are both award-winning acoustic musicians, blues guitarist Toby Walker and singer-songwriter Vance Gilbert. Bob Butts and the Baroque Orchestra will be presenting their annual Fall Festival every Sunday in August. The concerts will be recorded live at the Madison Community Arts Center for broadcast. The musicians will be recorded at the Arts Center, July 22nd, 23rd, 29th, and 30th. They're working on having the final concert stream live from the Arts Center. Another Red Cross blood drive is planned for the Arts Center on Monday, August 10th. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And Health, Ms. Cullen.
All right. And before I get to the Health Report, just a little more information about Saturday's event. The Borough Tri-Town Cares and the M E T C will be working together with the community to bring our towns together around racial injustice issues. Our first event will be this Saturday, July 18th, from 10 to noon at Dodge Field. Please come share your thoughts and ideas about diversity and inclusion in Madison. This conversation will be conducted by leaders from the community with the goal of learning who your neighbors are, both in your neighborhood and around the town. We'll start with a large group event and then go into small group discussions, but everything will be socially distanced and masks will be required. We will have guiding questions as well as some Madison trivia focused on looking at how immigrants, blacks, and others have influenced the Madison community. All ages are welcome. We ask that you do bring your own chairs if possible. We will have some. And we will have individually packaged snacks and some bottles of water. And hot off the press today, our raffle at the end for a basket for your coming and participating. Flyers are up on social media. If you want either more information about the event or would like a color flyer in English or Spanish, please email community@rosenet.org, and myself or Marie will get back to you with whatever it is that you need. Onto the Health Department. We remain in Stage Two of reopening with youth camps, museums, libraries, indoor pools at 25% capacity, casinos, and the state's motor vehicle offices, among the most recent reopenings. No additional Stage Two or Stage Three opening dates our plans have been announced. A note on motor vehicle offices. Simply put, they have been totally overwhelmed since their reopening, and they don't anticipate improvement in service levels for some time. Before making a trip to an M V C office, residents are encouraged to utilize online services if possible. Many expiration dates have also been extended to the end of August with others to the end of the year. Therefore, there may not be an immediate need to complete your transaction. Visit state nj.us/mvc for more details. Monitoring of our long-term care facilities includes regular testing, although with no new positive cases in the last 28 days, their outbreak designation has expired. As of today, Madison reports 154 total cases of COVID-19, and just eight cases remain open and are still being monitored by the Health Department. Something of note concerning recent cases. While the numbers in the last month or so in Madison are small compared to earlier this spring, approximately 60% of cases are in residents who are under the age of 25, compared to around 10% in March and April. We are not alone. Increases in this younger demographic are being seen statewide. This just reinforces the fact that children and adults alike need to be vigilant in maintaining social distancing, wearing face coverings, and washing their hands. The Madison Health Department has investigated a few cases arising from recent travel to states that are struggling to contain outbreaks. Currently, there are 19 states that are part of a New Jersey State Travel Advisory. We encourage you to avoid unnecessary travel to these states. Should you travel to a state on the list, please follow the self-quarantine protocol as outlined in this advisory. Visit covid19 nj.gov for more information. Lastly, on testing. While the county testing site at CCM is now closed, there are many healthcare providers in our area where you can receive a test. Check with your doctor or visit covid19 nj.gov/testing for more information. The Health Department recommends you get a test if you are of course experiencing symptoms of COVID-19, but also if you or a member of your household have recently participated in activities with those outside your house where social distancing and/or mask use was limited. Those activities might include camps, parties, barbecues, protests, demonstrations, a trip to the shore, etc. And finally, if we continue reopening and expanding our circle, some final reminders. Well, again, the average version. When you're away from home, practice social distancing as much as you can. When inside public spaces or traveling on mass transit, wear a face covering that covers both the nose and mouth. Last week, the governor signed an additional executive order requiring masks outdoors in public when social distancing is not possible. Wash your hands or use hand sanitizer often. Refrain from touching your face. Get exercise outdoors, but take proper precautions when in public areas. Parents, continue to communicate with your children about how they can protect themselves as they interact with friends or others outside your household. And please remember to place used gloves and disposable masks in the trash when you remove them. Thank you.
Thank you. And Utilities, Ms. Erlich.
Thank you, Mayor. Since the last report on June 22nd, three weeks ago, there have been four no-power or partial-power calls due to transformer or connector problems, some of which were exacerbated by the heat, as well as two storms which caused power outages on July 1st and July 6th. The widespread outage on July 6th was caused by a tree falling on the JCPN L feeder line to the borough, which has been widely reported and discussed within Madison. Currently, the Electric Department is upgrading the secondary wire, cable, and related equipment on Buckingham Drive. And finally, tree trimming, which is being performed by the Electric Department this year, is progressing nicely. The work continues. From the Water Department. On Tuesday, the 7th, a six-inch water main ruptured on King's Road due to a power failure. The on-and-off electrical power created an adverse condition and a buildup of pressure as the well pumps start and stop. So the department responded to the broken main, shut down the broken line, excavated, and made all the necessary repairs. The lead service line replacement program is ongoing. Approximately 5% of the service lines in town are lead. And lead services or service lines with a lead connection are being replaced during the course of roadway construction or by the Water Department on a schedule. The department reports that two such services were replaced on Loana Co Way last week. I'll add that it's my understanding that the high mineral content of our well water in Madison creates a kind of natural mineral lining of our pipes, which makes a barrier between the water to our homes and the few lead pipes that we have. And so this is something that, while on the one hand, the high mineral content of our water is a cause of dismay for many, it's good to know that both our water service lines and our sewer lines have this natural mineral lining, which preserves, extends the life of our pipes and creates a barrier between the pipes and the water we use. That is all from the Utilities Department.
Thank you. And thank you for the lesson on time to have good hard water. Okay, we will move on to communications and petitions.
None received, Mayor.
Hey, thank you. We are now on to our first of two invitations for discussion. This is the opportunity to ask questions and make comments on discussion items or resolutions, only those items. So if you want to comment other things or ordinances, such as if you wanted, if you're listening in and wanted to comment on the supply ID ordinance set, we'll have a hearing. So that's the appropriate time to comment on ordinances. So again, I'll review the resolutions that are on the agenda that you can comment on. And the one agenda item for today that you can comment on is the Municipal Audit and Corrective Action Plan. If you do wish to comment on the resolutions or at one agenda item, you can do so by raising your hand online, by clicking on that little hand if you're on your computer or hitting star nine if you're on phone. Please note that for security reasons, we cannot recognize anyone who is listed as anonymous or a call without a phone number. When you are recognized and unmuted, you must state your name and address before starting any comments. Failure to do so may result in you being muted or disconnected. And please state your agenda item or the resolution you are commenting on, and try to limit your comments to three minutes or less, but you will be given a one-minute grace period and will be stopped at four minutes. And if you have questions embedded in your comments, we will capture those as you speak and answer them when you're complete, so you don't lose time for the answers. Anyone wishing to comment, I'm sorry, I gotta tell you what the resolutions are today. Resolution 186, all part of the consent agenda. Resolution is appointing Kathy Nottine to the position of acting executive assistant to the mayor administrator. This is to fill a vacant position, annual salary of $69,000, $63,000. The acting title will be dropped on December 2nd. On Resolution 187, there's appointing Sarah Rafferty to the position of Confidential Secretary in the Finance Department. And this is an annual salary of $50,000. Resolution 188 is accepting the 2019 audit. Resolution 189, approving the 2019 Corrective Action Plan, which you will be hearing about shortly. Resolution 190 is approving a raffle license submitted by the PTSO of Madison High School. Resolution 191 is renewing liquor licenses at Borough of Madison for following businesses, Rishi Enterprise, Inc., Sagar Beverage, and Cross Atlantic Vines. All three of these licenses are distribution and are currently inactive. Resolution 192 is authorizing Mayor to execute Smithsonian Institution Archives of American Gardens License Agreement to the Madison Rose Garden Project. This is a project in partnership with a garden club and friends of Madison Kaitree. Resolution 193 is approving raffle licenses submitted by the Elks Madison Lodge for daily instant raffle games. Resolution 194 is grant authorizing submission of New Jersey Historic Trust Fund Grant Application Restoration of the Madison Sonic Lodge Number 93, which is the original Presbyterian church from Madison. Resolution 195 is allowing special permit use of Summer Hill Park by Boy Scouts of America Patriots Pack 124 for camping events on July 13th, 20th, and 27th, and August 3rd. Resolution 196 is authorizing change order and final payment to Midwest Construction for the Glenwild Road Project. And this is not to exceed $36,350 and funds to ordinance as one and two 2020. Resolution 197 is ratifying Resolution 197 is ratifying appointment of environmental committee volunteers. Resolution 198 is authorized acceptance of a settlement agreement with a borough employee. And resolution 199 is authorized on the contract with Clark Hinton hints for professional services regarding to Hartley Dodge Memorial Plaza in the amount not to exceed $3,100. And so those are the resolutions you may comment on. Again, raise your hand by clicking on the hand, state the, your name, your address, and then state the resolution or the agenda item, which is the audit you want to comment on. There'll be a later comment period in the meeting. Anyone wishing, please raise your hand. I am not seeing. Not seeing any there, so we will move on to our agenda discussions. And this is our, again, as mentioned, municipal audit and corrective action plan. CFO, Jim Burnett.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the time. Annually, the council is obligated to pass a resolution accepting the audit. This is the 2019 audit. We operate on a calendar year basis and the council will hear and hopefully consider resolution 188 2020 and then also sign the certification acknowledging that you have reviewed parts of the budget. In addition, there is the corrective action plan as council president and finance liaison Carmella Vitale mentioned, there's only one finding, the finding is segregation duties, and she explained it perfectly, so I don't think I need to go into details. Valerie Dolan is available for questions. It is her daughter's birthday, so hopefully it won't take too long. We'll let her daughter get back and Val get back to the festivities. But the audit was exceptionally clean. I want to thank all the members of the audit committee for their work and their hard work. I want to thank the auditors as well. The only one is the segregation of duties, and Carmella explained it perfectly. There's really nothing to it. It's a finding that the vast majority of municipalities in our size have to deal with. If there are any questions, I'm happy to take them now.
Any questions from the council? Val, to make sense, you had to step away from the big birthday celebrations. I'm going to make your time worthwhile and just if you could reinforce or your comments around the separation of duties and the fact that it's come up every year and we're not alone in this.
Yeah, no, with 75 municipalities that we audit, it probably occurs in probably 70 of the 75 audits. It really is not a significant area we are required to, as accountants, required to report on it, in that it does happen. However, what we feel is most of our towns, Madison especially, you have what we refer to as a compensating control. There are a series of checks and balances to ensure that that statute is fulfilled to the best of your abilities, given limited number and lack of reasoning to inconvenience your residents. So we feel that you're in the best of condition and we did, after our long discussion at the audit committee meeting, we decided to revamp the comment and the response a little differently to address those items specifically this year. So if you see it's repeated, we did tweak the language a little bit to say that this is the real reason and we don't really see it going away, but it's really nothing to be concerned about in that we feel that your finance office has a complete control and understanding of the information and you have compensating controls to control it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council members? Then we have the resolutions 188, 189, consent to accept the audit and the corrective action plan. And please tell your daughter that the mayor and the entire borough council say happy birthday.
Will do. Have a great evening, everyone.
Thank you, Mayor.
We now move on to ordinances for hearing. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Hey, the ordinance is scheduled for hearing. Were introduced by title and passed on a first reading at the regular meeting of the council held on Monday, June 22nd, 2020, all were posted and filed according to law. Copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
I call up ordinance, the ordinances for second reading, ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title, ordinance 19-2020.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending chapter 190 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Water to Update the Water Connection Fee Schedule.
I open hearing, anyone in the public wishing to comment under the same guidelines mentioned before, please raise your hand if you're on the phone by hitting star nine or by clicking on the hand if you are online. And again, first comments, first thing out of your mouth should be your name and address. See none, okay.
Mayor, I move ordinance 19-2020.
Second.
Any council discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to just make a comment about it. This is from Nisavachi and Company, who actually looks at these water and sewer connection fees every single year. It's their recommendation. And so they performed a study of the capital costs and interest and the debt service together with all of the equivalent users, you know, as of December 31st, 2019, and that's all stated in the resolution. But they worked very hard on it and they require us to look at those fees every single year. So it's a good suggestion and it's done very, in a very well organized way.
And thank you. And to reinforce is the, so our residents understand that as we adjust these, the connection fees and we have an introduction of ordinance tonight related to the sewer connection fees do not affect our current residents. These are making sure that people that create new connections or system are paying their share that our residents have been paying, paid for in the past. Any further discussion? A roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover? Okay. Ms. Cohen?
Yeah.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 19-2020 adopted and finally passed and ask the clerk to publish notice there of a newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. Now call up ordinance 2020.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison and the County of Mars, State of New Jersey, creating the Borough of Madison Identification Card Program.
I now open the hearing for ordinance 202020, and anyone wishing to comment, again, same rules, please click on the hand or star nine if you're on the phone and try to keep your comments to three minutes, but we will cut to at four. And first thing out of your mouth should be, must be your name and address, otherwise you may get cut off. I do see a couple of hands up.
Jim McGrath?
You are.
I'm unmuted?
Yes. Jim, you are on.
Hi, my name is Jim McGrath. I live at 3 West End Avenue. I would like to express my opposition to proposed ordinance 20-2020, municipal ID program. This has been reminiscent of the Simpsons episode entitled Marge versus the monorail, which initially aired on January 14th, 1993. Briefly, this episode involves the town of Springfield wanting a monorail in town. As a neighboring town, North Haverbrook just installed a monorail. Simply because neighboring towns offer a municipal ID is not enough reason for us to spend our scarce property tax dollars on this program. As an alternative, the state through the MBC offers a non-driver ID for residents 14 and older, which is a superior alternative and requires no expense of local taxpayer dollars. For those residents who do not have access to a car to get to the MBC, there's taxi service, Uber, Lyft. Mars County offers the map service and New Jersey offers the access link service. For those who simply requiring an emergency ID, I use something called the road ID, which is a weatherproof Velcro wristband, which has a tag with my name, address, phone number and emergency contact info. It's good for walking, biking, swimming or any activity where you may not want to carry a wallet or other ID type card. In summary, the municipal ID program, while low cost, is not no cost. Someone from the borough will need to administer the program, review the documentation and print the ID card. That will take time away from that person's other responsibilities in these tight budget times. The council's responsibility, I believe it's the council's responsibility to be fiscally proven and not implement a program that replicates a service already available simply because of borough pride or we want one, or that's how, because that's how it works on The Simpsons. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. And we have another with a hand up.
Can unmute yourself, Diana?
Hi, thank you. Here we are with probably 26, 26 plus members of the community and 19 Green Avenue in Madison, New Jersey, and my home address is 34 Rizdel Avenue, Madison, New Jersey. We are in support of the ordinance. We extremely happy. We see a very positive action by passing this ordinance. Madison is a town that is very proud to be inclusive town and especially in the current political environment is a very positive initiative, the town to be open to have a municipal ID for every single resident of Madison. And also in the light of the census 2020, we are very happy because that will be encouraged Madison residents to participate in the census, to be proud, to be part of Madison Town, to be proud to participate in Madison actions and Madison life. So we're very grateful and we applaud the town initiative to pass municipal IDs. And we are members of Winona Spirit Immigrant Resource Center here in Madison.
Thank you for your comments, Diana.
Diane, we just need your last name. Thank you.
Mejia, M.E.J.I.A.
Thank you.
Mayor, you're muted, but I do not see any other hands raised.
Sorry, I was about to cough, so I muted myself and then started talking and didn't cough. Yes.
No other hands.
Okay. Close the hearing?
Mayor, I move ordinance 20-2020.
Second.
All right. And a note, we've made some minor changes that our attorney has opined that were, did not require reintroduction. There were some edits, word editing and also removal of the section on homeless ID, so it clarifies that these are actual resident addresses. Yes, Austria?
Yeah, I just, I just want to reinforce what Diana said, that this is really for Madison residents and to service to Madison residents, that those people who do not have an ID can now get an ID, they can go to the library, they can pick up their kids at school, and these are our residents and our neighbors. And I think that's very important to emphasize that we tailored this for Madison residents. Thank you.
And related to comments made earlier, there's a fee structure that anticipates making this expense neutral, that the fees should cover the costs of the program. Obviously, there will be an outlay of fees to get it started, but it is structured in a way to cover the ongoing and the investment costs. And in light of Deb Cohen's comments around motor vehicle, not only am I happy that I'm retired from there, but it is, this is a program that makes it very easy for people to get identification. There is no plan in the near future that would ever get the ID program, a motor vehicle as a online system, but you have to check the documentation. So it puts it close to home and gives people a connection to Madison. Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yeah.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 20-2020 adopted and finally passed and ask the clerk to publish notice there of a newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. And now we are on to the second for invitations for discussion. Same guidelines as before with, but now you may comment on any topic. If you are online, you will click the hand. If you are at a phone, you're going to hit star nine. And again, for security reasons, we cannot recognize anyone listed as anonymous or call on the phone without a phone number identified. Once you are recognized and unmuted, please state your name and address before starting any comments. Failure, if you so may result in you being muted or disconnected. Try to keep your comments to three minutes or less, but I will give you a one-minute grace period. You'll be stopped at 40. And again, if there's any questions embedded in your comments, we will capture those and answer after your comment period. Anyone wishing to comment, please click the hand or hit star nine at this time.
Mayor, there are none.
Yep, not seeing any. We close this part of the meeting and we move on to introduction ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Yes. The ordinance is scheduled for a first reading, have a hearing date set for July the 27th, 2020. Will all be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board and made available members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading, ask the borough clerk to read said ordinance by title, ordinance 21-2020.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending chapter 155 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Sewer to Update the Sewer Connection Fee Schedule.
Mayor, I move ordinance 21-2020.
Second.
Any council discussion? And this is just to be the sewer version of what we passed before for the water and Carmella described. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yeah.
Ms. Erlich?
Ordinance 20, ordinance 22-2020. I'll be happy when we get out of the 20.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, appropriating $25,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of new bulletproof vest body armor and other safety equipment for the police department.
Mayor, I move ordinance 22-2020.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yeah.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Ordinance 23-2020.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, appropriating $40,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase and installation of a pipe ceiling grid system for the Madison Community Arts Center.
Mayor, I move ordinance 23-2020.
My second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yeah.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 24-2020.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending and supplementing certain provisions of chapter 195, section 32 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Land Development Ordinance.
Mayor, I move ordinance 24, I mean 24-2020.
Comments or discussion? Austria?
Yeah. Mayor, I would like to make my comments for both ordinance 24-2020 and ordinance 25-2020 since they are very much connected together.
Would like you to do it together also, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Okay, so I want everyone to know that the Fair Share Housing Corporation brought lawsuits against the municipalities of New Jersey, stating that our towns haven't complied with the council on affordable housing to provide low and moderate income housing. So we, the borough, have been in negotiations with the Fair Share Housing Corporation for several years to determine how to define our obligations and then meet those obligations. So tonight, these two ordinances that we are introducing are required to be part of our settlement with the Fair Share Housing Corporation. What we are doing is we are amending several sections of our land use ordinance to meet our housing obligation as defined in the settlement of the Fair Share Housing Corporation. For example, in the Central Business District 2 zone, we will now allow first floor housing previous Previously, you were saying it had to be commercial on the first floor and then housing on top. Now we're making this other provision available. But the important thing about this is this housing will be close to our historic Central Business District, bringing more people to our center and creating more opportunities for our businesses to thrive. We are also creating some overlay zones of housing, but continuing to allow the remaining zoning. And Madison Mall, which is in this commercial district, commercial center district down by Staples, has agreed to add 10 units of low and moderate income housing. So these ordinance changes are part of our settlement agreement. I think that's very important to point out at this point. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that on both these. And as you pointed out, not only for the agreement, but some good planning as we try to strengthen our downtown and make the rest of the commercial district stronger also. And just for those listening at home, that may not be understand, because it is a little confusing, we have Madison Plaza, which is the Staples Plaza with all the stores there. Right next door is Madison Mall Apartments. It is not, so we're not talking about the overlay on the, when you talked about the Madison Mall, we're talking about extending the existing apartments.
Good, good point. Thank you.
Yeah, some of these things we're get so used to, we don't. And any other discussion, and certainly if you want to comment in next ordinance at this, at this time, unless you've got specific to the next ordinance, please hold your comments, but feel free to comment on both of them. Hey, yes, Rachel?
I'd just like to add that both of these ordinances, 24 and 25, are in line with the principles of smart growth, the idea being that we want to encourage people to make their homes in walking distance of our downtown so that we can have, we can direct any growth in Madison to where we would like to have more people and help preserve open spaces where we have them. And this is one of the principles of our current master plan. It's one that we are reaffirming in the master plan progress that is ongoing. And I just want to say that I support both of these ordinances because they're good practice, good planning, and good for Madison.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yeah.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 25-2020.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending the affordable housing provisions of chapter 195, sections 47 and 48 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Land Development Ordinance.
Mayor, I move ordinance 25-2020.
A second.
Any council discussion? I will just add, I just want to thank the council for moving these forward, because as Austria said, this is going to go a long ways to getting us to the finish line and showing Fair Share Housing that we are committed to doing the right thing. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yeah.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Hey, we're on to consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move consent agenda resolutions 186-2020 to 199-2020.
Second.
Any discussion or any that need to be removed? A roll, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yeah.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Hey, there is no unfinished business. Approval vouchers. Will the clerk please read the voucher registry?
For the Kern Fund, $450,253.94. General Capital Fund, $896,681.86. Electric Operating Fund, $602,341.11. Water Operating Fund, $52,615.53. Water Capital Fund, $13,900.61. And the trust, $8,640.41. The total is $2,024,433.46.
Mayor, I move approval of the vouchers.
I'll second.
Any discussion, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yeah.
And Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
There is no new business. Rachel?
Mayor, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, thank you very much. And.
Hi, guys. See ya.
Take care. Everyone be well.